Go ahead and roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
President.
Counselor Gerson.
Present.
Counselor Trask.
Present.
Counselor Gorley.
Present.
Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez. Counselor Richards.
Here.
Let the record show we have six present with one absent. Counselor Sanchez is on vacation and will be here this evening. So I at this, at this point, ask for a motion for approval of absence.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, my roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yeah. Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Let's work it through. We have six yeses and no nays for the approval of the absence of Counselor Sanchez. At this time, you would like to go ahead and do the Microsoft Teams message?
Thank you to everyone who is joining us. For members of the public who would like to participate in this meeting, we have some instructions to help if you are new to using Microsoft Teams. Notice the icons in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The second one from the left is a chat bubble icon indicated with the yellow arrow. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. First, enter your name, address, and phone number in the chat, followed by the topic you wish to discuss. If you wish to speak at any point during the meeting, you can choose the hand icon also located in the upper right-hand corner indicated with the green arrow. It's the equivalent of raising your hand. Then the mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone a few moments now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they'd like to address with the council in the meeting chat. We will ask in the interest of time that people not repeat a previous speaker, instead state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or meeting chairperson for the council rules. The moderator will note those joining by phone for the mayor slash chairperson. The fact that the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior. The mayor retains the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules.
Thank you. At this time, consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, my roll call, please.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes. Director show we have six ayes, no nays, one absent approval, consent agenda. At this time, recognition of visitors hearing petitions. Anybody like to come forth be heard before council? Okay. At this time, we have, well, I think either by virtual or hopefully we have him present. Okay. Matt Brown is an interim finance director.
Greetings, council. My name is Matt Brown. I was hired by Christie and you, your staff, a little while ago to fill in for, as Brandon left the position, and I'm happy to be here and answer any questions or concerns you may have.
Okay. Counsel, if you have any questions you'd like to ask Matt Brown.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So Matt, this is Counselor Gerson. I was reading over the contract and it, and I understand that you're working for, literally for us on weekends. Is that correct?
It is on weekends and evenings throughout the day. Currently, I am taking administrative leave from the city of St. Helens as I transition to a new position that I am starting on September 1st for the Eugene School District as their Director of Financial Services. So over this last month or so, I've been coming into the office about once a week or so. I haven't been there, was not there this week or last week because I am currently in California on a vacation.
Well, I guess my question is, is in the contract on attachment, A, it outlines the compensation, which I suppose is what we're going by, right?
Correct, yeah. So I charge an hourly rate of $100 for my consulting services that I do outside of my regular job.
Okay, thank you.
Were there any questions or comments from any other council members?
Matt, we do have a counselor attempting to ask it. Might not be working if you can hang on just for a second.
Can you hear me now, Matt?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, I'm Dave Trask. Are we going to have an audit thing on the next council meeting or do you know?
You are. It's actually coming up. It was just finalized actually the last couple of weeks. They were waiting on some bank statements and a few other things to be finalized that Brandon was not able to finish before he left. So Christie and I were working together along with Cindy from the Finance Department to get some of those things finalized as well as their official review of the auditors. Once the auditors do a financial statements, their firm actually sends it to their own firm to review and make sure everything is correct before it's sent to the state of Oregon. That has now, your audit has now been sent for the state of Oregon and officially approved, and the auditors are prepared to come and present to you. I believe it is in a meeting in September. I want to say the second meeting in September, but I cannot recall off the top of my head.
September 27th is the, is the meeting.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I also have a question. Matt, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm Counselor Coleman, and I was curious as to, do you have a timeline for the next audit to be wrapped up? Is that for the 2021? I mean, yeah.
Yes, so the audit that you'll be receiving a review for is for the 2021 fiscal year. The 2022 fiscal year that just ended this past June, Brandon was not able to finish a lot of the bank reconciliations for the fiscal year. So myself, I am taking over some of the reconciliation duties for four out of five of the bank accounts that you have as a city. The main operating account, we are actually, you have a contract on your agenda tonight from Marina and Company. They are going to assist on the general operating account because that is a reconciling, reconciling account that has not been done since July of last year. It is a full 12 months of reconciling that needs to be completed before the auditors can come in. I unfortunately, because of my position starting September 1st with the Eugene School District, will not be able to perform those duties. And so Christie and I have reached out to Marina and Company to come in and do that operating account. Once that is reconciled, we are hoping and still scheduling the audit for 2022 to be completed sometime in the fall. That's typically when the auditors come in to complete their study. That is assuming that we can get all the bank reconciliations updated and reconciled through the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Couple more questions. Matt, when is that, when is that typically due to have that in?
To, to have the audit done and complete? Typically, I would like to say that the state likes to have the audit by March or April of the year that it's completed. So in a typical, in your best practices, I would say that the audit should have been done and completed and sent to the, sent to the state of Oregon by April of 2022 for the 2021 fiscal year. So the city did receive a letter from the State Auditors Division saying that, hey, you're kind of late. We got a nice little somewhat kind of what they would call a slap on the wrist just to kind of say, hey, you need to get this done. We worked with the auditors to help communicate with the states that were in a transition of finance directors. There were some things that were not done that we're trying to kind of finalize before everything was finished up. So we got that audit in. Everything is fine. There were no fees or fines or anything for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one more question. It's not for Matt, though. Can I ask him? So we have Chief Lynn, who is interim city manager for a little while. Is he going to be overseeing Matt Brown, too? That seems like a lot of responsibility. Thanks.
Questions to counsel? Thanks, Matt. Appreciate all your efforts.
Yep, thank you. And I'll be on for the rest of this meeting just in case any questions come up.
One second, Matt.
I do have just one, just so you're online. This is Robert Snyder, a city attorney. In the contract that I have, it says the term is going to be subject to the termination provisions of Section 10. And I believe it should say Section 9. If you've got your, the termination contract that I have, or my contract that I have has the termination provisions in Section 9. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, it does.
Okay, that, I just didn't want to change something if I was mistaken. Okay.
Yes, no, you are correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, Matt? Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
This time, we're going to go into old business, and we have a public hearing. This time, I will open up a public hearing at 6:40, and I will lead, go over the process and procedures for it. As I said, 6:40, open up a public hearing. This time, I'd like to ask the, this is based on the Community Development Block Grant. At this time, I'd like to ask the counselors if they have any biased conflict of interest or any ex parte communications.
No.
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 Show you six, no conflict of interest, counsel, biased or ex parte. This time, I'll turn it over for staff report.
Hey, counselors, as you are aware, during the pandemic, we applied for a couple of community development block grants. One of them was completed. That was for emergency childcare with the Boys and Girls Club. The second was with Community Lending Works to provide emergency business assistance. That, there were a number of delays with that program, but it finally completed. We held a second public hearing, as is required under the federal rules, for the one for the Boys and Girls Club, and we thought that that would suffice for this one as well. It turns out that it does not, and so this is to finalize, to complete this, this project and essentially hear from the public on any, any comments that they may have. This is basically the last thing we need to do to wrap this up and have it be done. In your packet is the, the final report of what was done. There were a number of businesses in Lynn County that were assisted through this program, and so we're grateful for the funding that the federal government provided for this. There was no city funding other than minimal staff time involved in this program.
Thanks, Blair. At this time, I'll open up for any public comment. Is there any other comment to this? If you have any, I'll be online. This time, I'll close the public hearing at 6:44. And any discussion of counsel? I don't think there's any decision regarding this. It's straightforward.
No vote, no decision is necessary. This is enough, and I can get this sent off to the state.
Okay. At this time, we'll move it on to RCA, Appointment of Manager Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I guess it's a little weird trying to point myself that it is, since the charter limits the, provide the time limit for any city manager pro tem to be appointed. Previous city manager pro tem, Christie, is, her time limit is expired, and there needs to be another pro tem appointed to help conduct city business. So this RCA is associated with appointing me as the city manager pro tem from August 24th of this year through September 13th of this year. And in essence, it's at council's discretion. There's the option to do that. There's also option to make a motion to appoint someone else as the city manager pro tem. So you have options on the table.
Questions to counsel?
So moved as recommended.
Please second it.
Motion second, my roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
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 Counselor Richard?
Yes.
Let's record show I have six ayes, no nays, and one absent approval of our current police chief as acting as pro tem city manager. Next up is RCA for Contracts of Services, Finance Director, Sam.
As you know, you had just talked with Matt Brown, who has been contracting as the Finance Director Pro Tem. And so before you was a request for council action to, in essence, extend his consulting services from, well, July with an expiration date in December of 31, 2022. Both, I think council has been aware and a previous city manager pro tem of the need for an interim administrator in the Finance Department with the, with the resignation of our previous one. And so the recommended contract is also attached. The city, city attorney had some comments for amendments on that one. Is that correct, Robert?
Just that, in the, in the contract, it just refers to, in, in the third term, says it's subject to termination provisions of Section 10. And I believe that should just read Section 9. That's the, you really turn the page and it's termination provisions are over in number nine instead of 10.
Any questions, counsel? Also directive.
So moved as amended. Second.
Motion and a second amendment, my roll call, please.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Ri, I'm sorry, Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes. Director show six ayes, no nays, one absent approval of the Contract for Services for Finance Director Pro Tem. Next up is RCA for ODOT Art and the Public Right Of Ways Agreement.
So this is probably a little familiar to you. We discussed this in June. Is this, after our last council meeting and some of the feedback from the council, we reached back out to ODOT to see what changes we could make that would make it more appealing, better for the city. What ODOT did was add some provisions on maintaining the landscaping beneath the mural so that they're committed to keeping that nice so that we don't have a mural over, overgrown weeds and such. And so that change has been made and accepted by ODOT. The agreement is now before you for any changes you would like to see to it as it stands now. Essentially, this, the need for this agreement is that there's a mural that is on ODOT property, and if we want it to remain in place, it was originally done by Sheddig. If we want that mural to remain in place, the ODOT is only willing to make agreements like this with the municipality. They, they can't make an agreement with Sheddig or any other organization. And so it is left to the city to take responsibility and make that agreement. Essentially, this just says that it, we will maintain that mural if we fail to maintain it or if, if the agreement is mutually decided among the parties, the city and ODOT, to cease, then ODOT would be free to do whatever they want with that wall. And so along with that, there is a remnant of the intersection of 228 and Highway 20 where there's a strip of grass that ODOT still owns that's adjacent to the Lynn, the East Lynn Museum. And the city has maintained that, and this essentially just continues that arrangement for the city maintaining that strip of greenery.
Any questions, counsel? Counselor Directive.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Blair, for looking into that again for us. I make a motion to authorize and direct the city manager pro tem to sign the proposed agreement as presented.
Second, Dan.
Motion second, my roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Director show I have six ayes, no nays, one absent approval of the ODOT Art and the Public Right Of Ways Agreement. Next up, we have a public hearing at 6, 6:51. It's going to be a land use public hearing, and it's a letter of sight of amendment LA 22-01. So at this time, I will open it up in for staff report.
Is Walt online? Okay. So as you know, for the past couple of years, the city has been working on an overhaul of our development code. This is, is now on the, it's been completed at the Planning Commission stage. They reviewed every word in this code. We read it all out loud and discussed it. That took approximately a year. And now it is in, after they've made several modifications and adjustments, it now comes before you. So the request, the city is requesting approval of the following. One, adopting a new zoning and land division regulations titled City of Sweet Home Development Code, replacing the current Title 16 land divisions and line adjustments and Title 17 zoning ordinance and incorporating parts of Title 15. Two, Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, replacing the Planned Recreation Commercial Designation Name with the Mixed Use Employment and a concurrent change in the Comprehensive Plan Map name Planned Recreation Commercial to Mixed Use Employment. The Zoning Map Amendment, reversing the zoning names of the medium-density residential R2 and high-density residential R3 zones. Change the name of all land currently zoned residential mixed use R4 to mixed use and change the name of all land currently zoned residential industrial transitional RMT to medium-density residential R2. Specific amendments are summarized in Exhibit A that's in your packet. The decision criteria for this can be found in our current zoning ordinance, which essentially outlines the process that we are going through right now. Summary of the application. The city council directly directed the Planning Commission to consider changes and updates to the current land use documents. After auditing the material, a consulting team was hired to prepare a new land use document. Working with city staff and the Planning Commission, the result of this effort created a new document combining Title 16 land divisions and lot adjustments and Title 17 zoning, as well as the flood hazard and historic resources provisions from Title 15 under a single unified document titled City of Sweet Home Development Code. During the process of creating the new document, it was determined additional changes to the land use maps and comprehensive plan texts were required to implement the material. These include the following. One, revised Comprehensive Plan Designation. Land currently designated recreation commercial in Comprehensive Plan Table 11 will be renamed mixed use employment. There is no change in the intended purpose of the designation, and the new language corresponds to a new mixed use employment zone MUE contained in the proposed code. Two, the Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Map. Concurrent with the change in Item 1, the Comprehensive Plan Map will see the Planned Recreation Commercial Map Designation change to mixed use employment. Three, Zone Map R2, R3. The current zoning document identifies the R2 zone as high-density residential and the R3 zone as medium-density residential. This is opposite of planning practice whereby the larger suffix number usually indicates a higher density. To address this, land currently zoned R2 high-density zone will now be identified as R3 high-density zone. Conversely, land currently identified as R3 medium-density zone will now be identified as R2 medium-density zone. Four, Zone Map R4 to MU. The current R4 zone will be renamed MU mixed use. Both zones are designed to allow a mix of residential and commercial uses. The name change reflects a greater emphasis on mixing uses within the zone as well as greater latitude and allowed uses. Five, Zone Map RMT Residential Industrial Transitional. Several properties are currently zoned RMT. The vast majority designated medium-density residential on the Comprehensive Plan Map. To align the zoning and plan maps and to allow additional uses, land currently zoned RMT will be rezoned to medium-density residential. The remainder of this report will summarize the material and identify the key changes between current regulations and proposed new code. In addition, findings are established in support of the various amendments. So to summarize, the new document uses the core material of the current document. Major changes revolve around the reorganization of material to improve usability for the staff and public and to incorporate recent changes in state law that apply or will apply to Sweet Home. The new document covers both Title 16 and 17 as well as the flood plain and historic resource provisions in Title 15. This material is further divided into four articles. The four articles introduce the purpose of the code, establish zones, list development regulations, and end with process requirements. The document follows current municipal code numbering formatting. Each article has a table of contents, and there is one at the beginning of the code. The city adopted a number of changes to the zoning code over the last 10, 10 or more years. These were included in the new development code but modified to either fit the revised format or address other issues. For example, home occupations are included in the existing code's conditional use provisions. The new code split, split the provisions by outlining specific use requirements for home occupations in Article 3 and identifying two types of review, review procedures in Article 4, permitted and conditionally permitted. Recent changes to state law establish provisions for needed middle housing HB 2001. Sweet Home is not required to comply with these provisions until it reaches a population of 10,000. However, the latest population data for 2021 places the city at 9,836 in population. Being this close, the commission and staff felt it prudent to make the changes as part of this project. Specific changes are noted under Article 2. As an aside, I'm almost positive that we're already past 10,000. We're just waiting for the state to catch up. Article 1 introduces the document and establishes the document's purpose and administrative responsibility. The article incorporates with some minor variations and exceptions Chapter 17.02 to 17.16 of the existing code. The article includes basic introductory provisions such as title purpose, administration violations, interpretations, and severability. New provisions include a statement to the effect that the city does not regulate private restrictions such as CCNRs. There is also a non-discrimination section regarding application and enforcement of the code. Chapter 17.04 includes definitions. All definitions found elsewhere in the code are also located in this chapter and are identified with a specific suffix for, such as the FHO for flood hazard overlay. Where appropriate, definitions were updated to reflect current planning usage. For example, the current definition for family, an individual or two or more persons related by blood, marriage, legal adoption, or legal guardianship living together as one housekeeping unit using one kitchen, providing meals or lodging to not more than two additional persons, excluding servants or a group of not more than five unrelated persons living together as one housekeeping unit using one kitchen. The revised version, persons living together in a dwelling unit as a single housekeeping unit. Article 2, zoning. This article addresses zoning and allowable development. This article includes current code provisions in Chapter 17.20 to 17.44 and Chapter 17.60 to 17.68. Overlay zones from Title 15 are also included in this article. Numbering protocol states the higher the number for residential zones, the greater the density and/or housing options. The R2 zone is currently the high-density zone while the R3 zone is a medium-density zone. These were switched to create an understandable hierarchy. Two, based on previous changes to the Comprehensive Plan and provisions in HB 2001, allowable uses and densities in each residential zone were changed. The net result was a reduction in the minimum lot size. The following chart outlines the changes from this current zoning code. That chart is in your packet. Essentially, to summarize, the R1 zone, it changes the minimum lot size from 8,000 square feet to 7,000 square feet. The R2 zone is unchanged, as is the R3 zone. And then there's some modifications for attached housing, allowing those to have And then there's some modifications for attached housing, allowing those to have a smaller lot size. The lot sizes and current corresponding dimensions were reduced to coincide with HB two thousand and one. Allowable residential densities correspond with these revisions. For example, to achieve the twenty eight unit per acre expectation for multifamily units in the revised R three zone, the minimum land area per unit is now one thousand five hundred square feet. HB two thousand and one also called for the cities to allow a duplex wherever a single family home is permitted. Further, there can be no distinction in the lot size between the two uses. Or the R four zone was converted to a mixed use zone and with an emphasis on mixing higher density residential uses and commercial activities. The R M T zone was eliminated. The zone had limited applicability that could be served by another zone, in this case, the R two. For the record, the vast majority of R M Ts zone land is currently designated as medium density on the comprehensive plan map. The public facility zone was added. The zone is designed specifically to support public works development on specific parcels. The proposed code includes a new mixed use employment zone as an alternative replacement to the R C zone and emphasizes employment opportunities, including commercial, institutional and limited industrial, along with additional opportunities for residential use. The key requirement is that except for construction of one single family home, development of land exceeding one acre requires a planned development application and review. Both zones are included in article two, the establishment of the M U E zone requires a zone change. Change in state law requires the city to provide affordable housing in the commercial and public zones and in limited cases, the industrial zone, S B eight and H B two thousand and eight. Specific development requirements are found in article three. Uh, affordable housing is limited to those lands owned by the public agencies or nonprofits involved with providing housing. The planned development overlay was eliminated. Instead, it is established as a separate set of guidelines in article three and can, can be applied to any zone except the public zone. The mobile home infill overlay zone was also eliminated. Consistent with state law, manufactured homes on individual lots as well as manufactured home parks are relocated in the appropriate residential zone. Floodplain overlay is current with the recently adopted federal language. Article three, uh, this article addresses how property can be considering can, how property can be developed considering such requirements as landscaping or parking. As noticed, as noted, existing overlay zones are now listed as development standards. The current code, uh, the storage sign and wireless communication provisions are also included in this article. This article require, includes the requirements for land divisions, which are then administered with provisions in article four. Street provisions from title sixteen are included as well. In many cases, some provisions in the current code manufactured homes, such as manufactured homes on individual lots were repeated in each zone. The zones now simply reference the specific requirements located in this article. Regarding access, the city adopted a joint driveway standard that was expanded to include development requirements for private access easement as well as private streets. Consistent with the requirements in HB two thousand and one, parking requirements for single family homes and duplexes are now the same. Sign requirements remain essentially unchanged. Uh, there is a new section included specifically to address the variance to sign regulations. As noted, planned developments are not processed as an overlay zone, which requires a cumbersome zone, zone change, but are reviewed in a manner similar to a subdivision with its own particular set of standards. In addition, the planned development, uh, to the planned development, there is a new cottage cluster development section. This is similar to a planned development. However, the standards are very strict as to residential building design in order to create a small shared neighborhood. A cottage cluster is processed as a planned development, but as noted with its own standards. There are a number of new sections addressing specific types of uses. While some are addressed in the current zoning code, the proposed development code reorganizes the existing material and adds some new uses. Fencing and screening, manufactured home parks, manufactured homes on individual lots, home occupations, residential accessory structures, special residential dwellings, temporary uses, bed and breakfast establishments and houses of worship all have adjustments to make them easier to work with. Article four, um, is the procedural article. Allowed uses and standards are found in the preceding articles. This article establishes the review procedures to establish those uses. This article incorporates chapters seventeen point eight zero to seventeen point eight four of the current zoning document. Finally, there are times in the, in the current zoning code when a review is required, but the process or criteria are not clearly stated. These types of actions are now placed in this article. As with current practice, four review types were established. This allows a simple way to connect the proposed activity with a process. For example, home occupations are processed as type one, which is a ministerial application. However, if people outside the household are employed, a type three conditional use is required. The process for each type is spelled out from application to final appeal to Luba. A chart is provided outlining the processes for each type of application. For example, a conditional use is a type three application. The staff makes a recommendation to the commission, the commission makes a decision and their decision is appealable to the council. Some flexibility is granted to staff when it comes to staff level decisions. For example, with property line adjustments, the director can waive some of the application requirements if there is sufficient information to process the request. The philosophy here is to reduce upfront application expenses where feasible. Variances are divided into those changing a quantifiable standard by no more than ten percent, which is an adjustment and changing a standard, a standard by greater than ten percent, which would be a variance. The former is reviewed by staff, the latter by the planning commission. Chapter seventeen point one zero two is a new, is new and contains provisions for site development review. These provisions generally apply to new multi, to new multifamily, commercial and industrial development. The purpose is to ensure new projects comply with all setback height, parking and other development standards. It is important to note that it is a, that a use requiring only a site development review is considered permitted. The purpose of the review is to ensure compliance with the applicable design and development standards. In a similar vein, for conditional uses, a use is generally assumed to be allowed, provided conditions can be placed to address any adverse impacts. Subdivisions and planned developments essentially follow the procedures and requirements of title sixteen. Minor changes were made to conform with provisions in O R S chapter ninety two, which governs land divisions. Current provisions on annexations were revised. It still remains a city level decision, but the process, process was clarified and criteria established. The four types of land use procedures, type one to type four, are clearly spelled out in chapter seventeen point one two two to chapter seventeen point one two eight. This includes the process from submittal to a final hearing before the city council. The responsibilities for the commission and council, including the hearing procedures, were spelled out in chapters seventeen point one three zero and seventeen point one three two respectively. Vacations of public ways were eliminated. This is the council decision as it involves real estate. The commission and or staff can play an advisory role to identify any relevant land use impacts. Criteria and findings, uh, procedures and criteria to amend the plan and zoning related text and plan and zoning maps are contained in seven, in section seventeen point one two dot, uh, point zero one zero to seventeen point one two point zero four zero. Compliance with these provisions is reviewed in the following sections. Section seventeen point one two point zero one zero outlines authorization to initiate amendments. An amendment to the text of the ordinance codified in this title or legislative zoning map amendment may be initiated, initiated by the city manager, the city planning commission, the city council or a property owner. A quasi judicial zoning map amendment may be initiated by a property owner, a representative of the property owner, the city manager, the planning commission or the city council. A request for a quasi judicial zone map amendment by a property owner shall be accomplished by filing and an application with the city planner at least forty five days prior to the planning commission meeting and using forms prescribed pursuant to seventeen point one two point one zero zero. Findings, consistent with this section, the city council authorized the project to establish a new combined zoning and land division code. Additional modifications in support of the new code were initiated by the staff and the commission. Section seventeen point one two point zero two zero establishes the public hearing requirements. Planning commission may elect to conduct a public hearing on a proposed amendment. Planning commission and shall recommend to the city council approval, disapproval or modification of the proposed amendment. After receiving the recommendation of the planning commission, the city council shall hold a public hearing on the proposed amendment. That's what, what's happening right now. All public hearing procedures shall be in accordance with, uh, the code seventeen point one two point one two zero and seventeen point one two point one three zero. That's what we've been following. Within five days after a decision has been rendered with reference to an amendment, the city manager shall provide the applicant, which is the city, with written notice to have the decision. Written notice of a decision shall apply to the recommendations made by the planning commission and to final action made by the city council. Findings, the planning commission hearing procedure is consistent with the requirements. Their recommendation will be forwarded, has been forwarded to the city council. Section seventeen point one two point zero two five establishes the review criteria for map amendments. An amendment to the official zoning or comprehensive plan map may be authorized, provided that the proposal satisfied all relevant requirements of this title, also provided that the applicant demonstrates the following. The proposed amendment is consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. This section does not require the planning commission to consider compliance with the comprehensive plan as part of a text amendment. However, per state law, the text material implementing the plan must be consistent with the plan. Plan policies are organized in groups. A response to each group of policies follows. Parks and open space policies generally encourage open space and lands for recreation. Findings, the revisions do not impact open space requirements. They are continually maintained and enhanced through provisions such as new landscaping requirements. Residential land use policies, the core purpose of housing policies are to ensure there is a wide variety of housing types and locations best suited to each housing type and that meet the needs of the community. Findings, the revisions reduce lot sizes, increase housing options. The addition, with the addition of duplexes in all residential zones allows ADUs and provides opportunities for affordable housing consistent with state law. Economic development policies, the core purpose of these policies is to encourage economic opportunities for the community by maintaining existing businesses and promoting new ones. A special interest or recreation commercial designated lands, which mix commercial and housing needs with potential recreational opportunities. Findings, existing commercial zones and opportunities remain while in many cases additional uses are allowed. This is further enhanced by a new mixed use zone that expands options beyond their current R four zone. Recreation commercial designated lands remain, but will have an option to apply the mixed use employment zone, again increasing development opportunities from the current R C zone. Industrial provisions and opportunities are unchanged. Transportation policies, transportation, uh, encourage the system to carry volumes and speeds appropriate for their classification. Findings, the new development code does not impede the objections, objectives of the transportation policies. Private streets are allowed along with shared driveways to improve development efficiencies. Facilities policies, policies are designed to ensure the city can meet the public and private facility needs of the community. Findings, overall facilities policies establish guidelines for financing and develop needed facilities and are not directly related to the new code. However, in support of future facility development, the development code establishes a new public facility zone designed to facilitate project development. Citizen involvement policies, uh, establish the planning commission as the local citizen involvement committee. As part of its role, their task is to ensure the community has an opportunity to participate in land use decisions. Findings, the new development code provides greater clarity on various land use processes, which is designed to help the public and staff in using the development code. Otherwise, citizens retain the same rights regarding participating in hearings and appeals. Plan amendment policies, uh, the new development code continually supports these policies. Proposed amendment is orderly and timely, considering the pattern of development in the area surrounding land uses and any changes which may have occurred in the neighborhood or community to warrant the proposed amendment. Findings, the city council and planning commission recognize the need to update the zoning and land division provisions, not only to address changing circumstances, but to conform a state law. Uh, utilities and services can be efficiently provided to serve the proposed uses or other potential uses in the proposed zoning district. Uh, the new code will not alter current requirements regarding service provisions. Proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan map is consistent with Oregon statewide planning goals. Findings, the Department of Land Conservation and Development acknowledged the current comprehensive plan is complying with the statewide goals. Previous findings indicate the new development code is consistent with those adopted and acknowledged planned policies. Therefore, the new code complies with the statewide goals. Uh, the comprehensive plan and text map amendment. Comprehensive plan table eleven identifies both planned designations and their purpose applicable for economic development. The table includes the recreation commercial designation to read as follows. Recreation commercial to provide and maintain areas that possess unique characteristics for recreational, commercial development that is suitable and desirable for businesses catering to tourist and recreational activity. High standards should encourage maintaining and enhancing the appearance of the area and its unique value to the community. Corresponding zone is the recreation commercial. The proposed development code includes a new zone mixed use employment. This zone is ultimately designed to supplant the recreation commercial zone over, uh, overlay by allowing citizens an option to either maintain the current R C zone on their land or opt for more, the more intensive M U E zone. Initially, the plan text needs amending by replacing recreation commercial with mixed use employment. There will be no change as to the purpose of the designation. Concurrent with the text change is a change in the comprehensive plan map. Those lands currently designated recreation commercial will now be designated mixed use employment. There is no change in acreage, the other changes in the name of the map designation. Uh, section seventeen point one two point zero two five establishes the review criteria for map amendments. An amendment to the following, to the official zoning or comprehensive plan map may be authorized, provided that the proposal satisfies all relevant requirements of this title and also provided that the applicant demonstrates the following. That the amendment, proposed amendment is consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Findings, as noted, the change is limited to the name of the plan map designation. The purpose and intent of the designation remain unaltered. Therefore, the proposed change remains consistent with current plan goals and policies. The proposed amendment is orderly and timely, considering the pattern of development in the area surrounding land uses and any changes which may have occurred in the neighborhood or community to warrant the proposed amendment. Findings, this criterion does not directly apply as the intent and purpose of the designation remain unchanged. Utility and service provisions are unaffected as the amendment is limited to a change in the plan map designation. And then finally, the, the department of land conservation development previously acknowledged the current city comprehensive plan. The change is limited to the establishment of a new name for the designation and does not change the previous acknowledgement by the state. Uh, the zone map amendment from R two to R three. Land, that's as we discussed before, it was previously mislabeled, R two becomes R three and R three becomes R two. As noted, this change is limited to just the name, the purpose and intent of the zones, including the permitted uses in the new code remain unaltered. Therefore, the proposed name change remains consistent with the current plan goals and policies. And the, the criterion of whether it's orderly and timely does not directly apply as the intent or purpose of the respective zones remains unchanged. Utility and service provisions are unaffected as the amendment is limited to a change in the zones names. And the current comprehensive plan was previously acknowledged by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Change is limited to the establishment of a new name for the designation, does not change the previous state acknowledgement. Similar with the R four to MU, uh, change. It's consistent with, uh, with the goals and plans of the comprehensive plan. Uh, it is orderly and timely, utilities and services can be, uh, are unaffected. And it has also, um, is consistent with Oregon statewide planning goals. Same thing with the R M two, R M T to R two zone change. Finally, uh, in summary, the new development code updates the existing material and ensures compliance with recent changes to state law. While the core of the current material remains, the new format is expected to assist both the public and staff in applying the planning standards and requirements. The new development code also required additional changes to both the comprehensive plan and zoning maps. These changes are in name only and do not alter the purpose of the respective plan designations or zones. Our recommendation, city staff believes the proposal can comply with the applicable decision criteria and recommends that the city council approve the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan and text and amendments to the zoning map. The planning commission has also given their recommendation. My apologies for the length of that. A lot of things are required that are long. So that's the staff report.
Thank you, Blair. Appreciate your reading. That is a lot, but thank you for all your efforts and, and reading that. At this time, I ask the council for if they've had any conflict of interest, ex parte information or personal bias.
Now.
No.
I've had discussions with Blair. What does that say? Nothing? Okay, then no.
Okay. No.
No.
Let the record show, we have, uh, no conflict of interest, ex parte, it's personal bias of any council. At this time, we'll have testimony of those in favor of support of the application. This time we'll have testimony of those in opposition of the application. Time testimony of those neither in support or opposition. At seven nineteen, I will close the public hearing. This time I'll open up for council discussion and deliberation.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I'd like to thank Blair for taking his time today to clarify for me because there's a lot of information in here. And as you know, I don't like to approve things I don't understand. And I don't think we should have things on the books that can't be enforced. Uh, so I do appreciate it, Blair, very much. Thank you.
Appreciate the efforts of all the city staff. That, in my opinion, cleaned up a lot of, a lot of areas and streamlined a lot of things, in my opinion. So thank you to all city staff and all their efforts. Um, and the other, the counselors? This time we need a council directive.
So moved.
Just a second, by roll call, please.
Can we clarify the motion? Moved as recommended?
Yes, that's moved.
Yes, sorry. Unless you want to read it again.
No, no.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Councillor Gerson.
Yes.
Councillor Trask.
Yes.
Councillor Gorley.
Yes.
Councillor Coleman.
Yes.
Councillor Richards.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, one absent approval of the legislative amendment L A twenty two dash zero one. At this time, we have an RCA resolution number thirty for twenty twenty two, a resolution approving the city manager employment agreement.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, before you, as you know, an offer of employment has been extended to Kelsey Young for the position of city manager. That employment agreement is attached and before you for your review. So just staffs looking for. Input and your decision.
Any questions to council? Council directive.
So moved as recommended.
Councillor Dylan moved, Councillor Gerson second, my roll call, please.
Councillor Gorley.
Yes.
Councillor Coleman.
Yes.
Councillor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Councillor Gerson.
Yes.
Councillor Trask.
Yes.
Record show of six eyes, no nays, one absent approval of the city manager employment agreement. Next up is RCA approving the consulting transition city manager employment grant.
Again, Mr. Mayor, Christie Worstrew has been serving as the city manager pro tem has offered her services as a consulting transition city manager to help onboard Kelsey Young. And that attached, there attached is a temporary employment contract for your review. If it so pleases the council.
Any questions of council? Council director.
So moved as recommended.
Second.
Motion second, my roll call, please.
Councillor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yeah.
Councillor Gerson.
Yes.
Councillor Trask.
Yes.
Councillor Gorley.
Yes.
Councillor Coleman.
Yes.
Record show of six eyes, no nays, one absent approval of the consulting transition city manager employment. Next up RCA contract to services Marina and Company.
Mr. Mayor, before you, as you had previously talked to Finance Director Brown earlier, he had mentioned this contract that was coming before you. Attached is a proposed contract for services with Marina and Company. It's in essence to help address some staffing challenges in the finance department. Staff is requesting a motion to authorize. Is requesting a motion to authorize staff to enter into a contract with Marina and Company for finance services. And I know that Mr. Brown is still online if you have specific questions associated with this.
Matt, do you have any questions?
There he is.
I have no questions, council. Just to reiterate, Marina and Company will be, the city would be using their services for the reconciling of the main operating account from Amquah Bank. And that reconciling process will need to be for July of twenty twenty one through July, through June of twenty twenty two to get the bank reconciliation up to date. The city, if you may or may not know, has five separate bank accounts that are used within Amquah, the State Pool account. And so I am taking on reconciling four out of those five accounts, but because of my time constraints and my new job starting on September first. Marina and Company will would like to be assisting or we'd like to propose that they assist with doing the main operating account so that we can ensure that we get everything reconciled in time for the audits.
Any questions, council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So Matt, this is Councillor Gerson. I know these are being reconciled by hand. We tend to have a lot of software in the finance department. Is there anything that we can do to make this a simpler situation? I thought computers were supposed to do that.
I would love to point you in the direction of using the software. However, the software chosen that you have, Springbrook Software. I will say it is at least my opinion, as well as Brandon's and several other finance directors that have used Springbrook in the past. Springbrook Software is great for many modules that you guys are using. And the city of Sweet Home is, I would say, far above any other cities in doing stuff as electronically as possible, and that is fantastic. However, the bank reconciliation process for the Springbrook Software program is sorely inadequate. And it is not a module that the software company has chosen to improve over the years. And so unfortunately, the city of Sweet Home and Brandon in the past, as well as many other cities that use Springbrook, do reconcile using Excel. And then having reports from Springbrook, like seeing the outstanding checks, and then we enter those onto Excel. So unfortunately, as of right now, I don't expect that to happen. And your reconciling for bank statements has not been used in the past on the Springbrook Software program. Maybe one day if Springbrook improves that module, it may be possible to do that. But unfortunately, right now, it is not.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask another question? So Matt. Is there a way we can streamline the process that within the staffing so that we can get this done in a reasonable amount of time?
Yes, I would like to say. I would say in my best practices and my history, it is always best practice to have your bank reconciliations no more than one or two months behind. So I know Brandon was attempting to do all the bank reconciliations before he left. Unfortunately, he did not have enough time to complete them. So we are hoping that we're going to essentially kind of give it a little kick in the pants and are asking for another consultant to come in to help get this process done fast. That way it does not prohibit the audit from starting and and the city going into another delayed audit response that you had for twenty twenty one. Our hope is that once we get June reconciled, then we could easily reconcile likely July, August and September. Hoping in September, October that we will be able to fill a finance director role. And my understanding is that in the previous budget that was approved, you also have approved another accountant position. That is a position that in my report to the city manager was. Was in my report, a new financial structure for the department to hire that person and have that person assist with some of these duties that the finance director did not have time for in the past.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Matt, I'm Dave Trask, I've got a couple of questions. Are we ever going to see you in person?
Yes, actually, I can turn on my camera here, I'm sorry. You can actually see what I look like.
No, not like that, no, I mean physically in the room. We've got a thing for you. The other thing is, the most important thing is, so that spring book, is that what it's called? Is there an option for us to to change? Or do we just have to be able to upgrade what we have?
So you, the Springbrook software that you have, it's a software company that's been around for probably thirty plus years. It was a very popular software back probably ten, five, fifteen years ago. It was a Portland based company and a lot of people in Oregon just stuck with that company because it was their home based product and they loved it. And Springbrook used to be a family run software company. The family decided to sell the company when the father retired. It was sold to Exela. Exela started with the product, didn't do any improvements for a couple of years and really just let things lie. And so that upset a lot of their customers, including myself, because at the city of St. Helens, we were a Springbrook customer. And so we went through the process, as many cities can do, to look at a new software program. There are three to four favorites, I would say, that are very commonly used around cities. The cost to switch is not something to take lightly. It is usually an expense that is typically in the hundred or so thousand dollar range, sometimes more, depending on the size of your city and how complex your system is. It is something that you can switch. However, I will say, like I mentioned earlier, the city of Sweet Home is very ingrained in Springbrook and how you use it. And you are far. Using it to its capabilities than any other city that I have actually seen and worked with. Because of how much you are doing electronically, it is very easy for me to work remotely and not charge you to come to drive in and out of Sweet Home. Because I have access to the program on the cloud and I can do a lot of the reports at ten, eleven o'clock at night when I can't. You know, when I do my typical consulting work and on the weekends. So yes, you could look at switching. Yes, there are better programs that offer better bank reconciling. However, they may not offer as many attributes as you have in other modules. So there's always kind of a balance, depending on what modules do you use specifically at your city. And I would say you and your staff at the city of Sweet Home is fantastic about using what you have to the best of its capabilities. And so it would not be my recommendation to look at switching at this time, just based on one module.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize to enter into a contract with Marina and Company for finance services.
Second then?
Who's the second?
Season.
Have a motion second, my roll call, please.
Councillor Trask.
Yes.
Councillor Gorley.
Yes.
Councillor Coleman.
Yes.
Councillor Richards.
Yep.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Councillor Gerson.
Yes.
Record show, we have six eyes, no nays, one absent approval of contract services for Marina and Company. Next up is RCA for electronic construction document control system software and support services.
I think I'm up, thank you, Mayor, Council. Have an RCA in front of you, have a several, a couple of them, but the next two are kind of related a little bit, but they are secret documents. This RCA is requesting council to authorize and to advertise electronic construction document control system software and support services. For the wastewater project that we're getting ready to start on. The software that we're looking for is going to help expedite change orders. It will track. From the start of when we decide that something's going to be changed or it needs to be changed, there'll be correspondence, there'll be emails, there'll be approvals, there'll be potential re-engineerings. And so what this does is keeps everybody in tune with each other and communicating in a timely manner. As you can see, it's, are responsible to, we are responsible to respond in a timely manner. Delays will, could cost us more money if we don't respond to some of these and quickly. As an example, on the next page of the RCA. Trish gave some examples of other projects that have been recent. You can see there's Lebanon's water treatment plant, there's a city of Lake Oswego, a little bit bigger project. You can see the amount of change orders and submittals that are involved with that. And there's lots of correspondence and things that go along with that. So what we're recommending or asking is that you move to authorize staff to advertise. An R F P or electronic construction document control system software and support services. Once we fly it, we would come back and ask your approval to award that contract. We think the cost of this could be fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. They're not exactly apples to apples, as it says in the R F P. So we just want to ensure that we get the best product for the best price. And so when, once we put this out and we get the information, we'll come back and discuss what we've done. With that, if there's any questions, I can.
Questions, council.
Mr. Mayor. Um, so Greg. Where is this software going to be? How is, if I could use that word?
It would be, I would imagine we would store it in our system or in the construction trailer and it would be used with. With West Coast and it would be used for us. I talked to Trish related to other projects and the software, we may not want to use it for every project. If we have a small project, it may not be beneficial to use that. But if we do a reservoir down the road and it's a lot more million dollar project, we would have opportunities to use this again. But the reality is, is that we got a lot going on and if I don't have something to easily organize this, I have to rethink the contract services document. Because there could be more dollars associated with that, more staff capacity that we would hire with West Coast. So we can use it in other things, but it is specific for this project.
Did want to clarify, make sure, I'm glad you clarified that this is not straight, if you were to give this a work for this RP, that is not just for the waste park, it could be.
No, we could use it for other things for larger projects. And the other thing is, we don't want the contractor, we can put this on to the contractor and say, you have to supply it and you have to use it, but then it becomes their program and their documents. And then we're using their system. I think it'd be a lot better if we had control of that building this project myself.
Ms. Mayor, if I may, Greg, is it, so I see these numbers here that are pretty high.
Which one, the?
Oh, Lake Oswego is sixty six something, yeah, how are we going to get away with fifty to a hundred thousand?
You know what, we've got a group of, you know, we've got a group of good engineers here, if we can find the funding, this is a good project to build.
Okay.
We have to do it.
Okay.
I know phase one is only a third of that project and then we're going to come back and do, you know, phase two with the rest of it. But I think it's important that we do everything we can to help our capacity with our staff. If not, I would probably request that we postpone the next discussion until we can have that discussion with our engineering firm. So.
Mr. Mayor, so is this going to see us through all the phases?
Yes.
From beginning to end?
This, the use of this software, yes, for the entire project.
I would like to make a request that we have, I don't want to call it a spreadsheet, but. Every time we have an agenda, we seem to be spending an awful lot of money. And I don't know where we are on this, I know you do, but we don't.
We, but this is budgeted in our overall budget that we brought to you guys for discussion.
But I don't know what we've spent of the budget. So would it be possible for us to have some kind of update so that we know as we're going along where we are on this?
Sure.
I mean, I know you do know, but we don't know.
Well, I think as we get it with the new finance director, there are some things that I've discussed with our past city manager pro tem. I think we need to develop, as we're getting into the construction, is we need to develop a reporting mechanism to you guys. We need to give you a report once a month specifically on the wastewater plant and not only talk about the things that we're accomplishing, but some of the things that are coming down that pipe and what's expected from us and maybe at council as well. I do believe that we can do better communicating with you guys and we've kind of been bouncing around with that a little bit, but I think there's room for improvement for sure.
I would appreciate it, thank you.
I agree with you.
And Matt has mentioned that he's available to speak on this topic as well. Finance reporting. Matt, are you there?
Thank you, chief, I am here. I did get this question proposed to me about the funding mechanisms for the software. Like the director mentioned, it is budgeted in the software or in the budget for this next upcoming year. You also do have over a million dollars in available funds in your enterprise water fund just alone to spend this. I do apologize for not having financial reports. As I mentioned, we've had quite a little pitfalls every here and there about getting bank reconciliations done. And as you can imagine, that impacts the financials from month to month. So we are hoping with the Marina and Company to get everything back on track. And the, I've worked with Christie in the past and will work with Jeff as well on trying to get updated reports of the financials to you as quickly as we can.
On trying to get updated reports of the financials to you as quickly as we can. We are hesitant in the past couple of months to give you any reports because we were not sure how accurate they were. And so instead of giving you wrong information, we want to make sure and get you the right information.
Thanks, Matt. Any other questions, Council?
I have a question, I have a comment, and I just want to say thank you, Greg, for this chart in here. Because I think it helps to see the volume of what, why you would need this software, that, just the volume of what's going to be coming down based upon the different sizes of these projects.
I did have conversations with Preston prior to this, and we wanted to bring this to you last meeting when both he was here and present. But it would, it would add, he would have to add, if we have to take this on without the software, it would add another body to the project from West Coast. That potential cost could be up around a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So just, just know that. We're, we got a lot of work going on and we still have to deal with everything that's going on in town as we're building this, so.
And again, reiterating, this is a major infrastructure project and that the software is mainly benefiting this, but you can use it for future, who knows whether future.
Yeah, and, and it's just not to our advantage if we have like a small, small block pipeline or, or something small like this pump even project, we could have probably used it for that. But it's just not a lot going on where it really warrants that. But definitely for this project, we want to be on top of everything in a timely manner.
Reservoirs and things like that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I, Greg, how long is that, how long is that going to last?
The entire project or phase one? Phase one is twelve months.
Okay, so then is it going to carry on beyond stage?
Well, when we, yeah, so the software will still be used. When we go into phase two, we can then still use the same thing for the entire project.
Okay.
So that'll go on till two thousand.
With the same amount of money?
No.
Okay, alright.
Well, we need for the software?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Whatever that cost is, we purchase that software.
Okay.
We will use it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm moving on to the next.
No, that's fine.
And again, I've seen softwares. You know, for private sector, for even retail, looking at forty thousand dollars just for a simple.
Yeah.
Computer system and retail store stuff. I mean, software.
Same discussion we had with Springbrook and different going on and, and, and it is, we were looking at Hanson's where I used to work and it was, it was going to be well in millions. Because of the capacity.
Any questions, Council? Right, Council Directive.
So moved as recommended.
Hold on a second, my roll call please.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Director show, I have six eyes, no nays, one absent approval of the Electronic Construction Document Control Systems Software and Support Services RFP. Next up is RF, excuse me RCA for Mahler WF Construction Support Service Proposal.
So, you know, same, thank you, Mayor, Council, this is the same topic. The other side of the contract where we are now asking West Coast to provide us construction services during phase one. And this RCA in front of you is for that. You can see the cost for that work is eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. For that, they will look at special testing, work with our integrator record and all the electronics. Work with city staff, the contractor, they ensure that the design is being constructed as intended. Again, I've given you the same examples, showing some projects of how much work can be involved with that. With that, we are asking that staff, or we making the recommendation to approve option one. Move to authorize staff to execute the proposal to provide engineering services during construction. For the Sweet Home Mahler Water Reclamation Facility Phase One Improvements Project. And that is one third of our three million that we proposed.
Questions, Council?
Mr. Mayor, so I looked up the April twenty-sixth. That was, that Trish talked about here, and at that time, we, the proposed amount for this services was one point one million. So coming in at three hundred thousand less than what they proposed. Even though I kind of gulped at the eight hundred thousand. But it is less than they proposed April twenty-sixth, so.
It is, and it's a good answer for why that's occurred. We also had to downsize the project a little bit, scope of phase one. So with that, the construction services dropped a little bit. So you could on the other half see that three hundred thousand move over to phase two, even though it's still just a three million dollar pot of money.
Right.
So it's, that's reason why I think that number became a little bit less is because there's a little bit less work involved with that.
Any questions, Council? Council Directive.
So moved as recommended.
Second.
Hold on a second, my roll call please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Director show, we have six eyes, no nays, one absent approval of the Mahler WF Construction Support Services Proposal. Next up is RCA for ODOT US twenty, OR two twenty eighty ramp ad work agreement.
Well, I'll keep going. Thank you, Mayor, Councilors. Off to a different topic and spending a little bit different money with ODOT. Right now, they are waiting for us. They wanted a couple of days ago to get started on four fire hydrants along Highway two twenty-eight. They're sitting stagnant until we can get those moved. This will allow, this RCA and seeking your approval will allow an increase of funds to go to the ODOT project, which we have budgeted from with the PATH project. We are requesting to move a couple of meters, some valves and six fire hydrants. These are long side fire hydrants that are extending across the highway where. We don't have the equipment to even cut through the highway, let alone dig through it. And so to get out of their way, we, we went and did as much work as we possibly could. We moved plenty of meters. We moved a couple of fire hydrants on our own. This is more extensive work, kind of like what we were carrying out at the other end when we had to relocate that sixteen inch water main. But with that, I'm asking your permission to extend the IGA and use PATH funds to pay for that work. Which will start tomorrow morning at probably seven AM, once I get out of here and can text some people, so.
Yeah, one quick question, and I know, I know the answer to this question, but I just want to clarify. That will not affect the pressures of these hydrants.
No, what, shutting them off or?
Or change.
No, 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 no. All we're doing is actually setting them back out of the ADA ramps. And ODOT came to us and wanted us to really like move them like down the street, and so we're kind of working with them and saying, no, we're just going to put it behind. Behind your work and they really can't tell us to put it in outside of that, so. We're working with them, they're being fairly good to work with, but it will not affect pressures. It's just shutting off the main to relocate some hydrants.
I asked this for emergency services questions, that's why I asked.
Well, that's the next one, so. No. We, we have made, for those fire hydrants, we have already notified those customers that it'll be shut off for about a four hour period. We've made those notifications today. And so they're expecting, once everything's approved, that that work will take place tomorrow morning. And we have been getting tons of phone calls, so nobody wants to see phone calls as much as myself, so. Anyway.
Any questions, the Council?
Question?
Go ahead, Councilperson.
So would you be down the road, tell us how much this, this ODOT project of ADA ramps has cost the city?
Right now, from what we authorized, we authorized a twelve, twelve, two fifty, you bought, you're hopefully authorized in ninety-eight. And then we spent whatever we cost for, for Emirate to move that sixteen inch water main, right? We had to drop that, that was almost a hundred thousand. Yeah, I know, but it's all, it's all ODOT's doing their work. We also paid for sidewalk portions of that, I mean. If you just want utilities that we're going to look at, we can get those prices, but we've been spending quite a bit of money. For these PATH projects, not just ADA ramps, but the sidewalk out at the other end. And, and this should be the last one. And when these are done, they'll be done with all the ADA ramps. So this is last phase. And I will be glad to see those cones out here, probably just as much as you guys, so.
Now, I noticed that they're starting there on twenty-second and meaning is that the flashing light?
That is the flashing light, yeah.
Just wanted to clear, make sure that's.
Yeah, yep, and we met with them, I want to say a couple of months ago, we had a pre-construction meeting and that's when we started ordering parts. So we, we still are waiting for some of those parts and things, so.
You know how many more AD ramp that they got to you?
I, I could get that number for you. I don't know it off the top of my head.
There was a few sidewalks that they didn't have not touched and I kind of scratched my head as well.
So they, 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 they did it in two phases. Phase one was ADA ramps light. And we call it ADA will have light because there wasn't a lot of infrastructure that needed to be moved with those. They could get in and they can get out relatively quick. These other ramps, you're dealing with, you know, Sweet Homes, fire hydrants, you have gas, you, you have all these other agencies that are trying to get their utilities. And it was a lot more work than just going in, digging them out and putting them in. And so they broke them up that way. It gave all the utilities a longer period of time to get their utilities relocated.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. I think it's funny, and to a degree, I was at, I was doing a walk the other day on Evergreen Street, which is off Highway two twenty-eight. And on that corner. They've got a new sidewalk and new ramp and thing, but the ramp goes south off of that road and guess where it goes? Nowhere, there's a ditch there. There's a ditch there that's like ten feet deep. And they got ramps.
Well, the best ones on those sages when it's going downhill, I'd love to see the wheelchair going down that.
The inspectors are literally out there with, with. Small twelve inch level. And if they're literally out, they have to pick them out, so.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to get this going with, with what's written.
I'll second that.
Counselor Richards.
Yep.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Director show, we have six eyes, no nays, one absent approval of ODOT US twenty twenty-eight ADA ramp ad work agreement. Next stop is RCA for IGA Transportation and Growth Management Plan.
I'll give Greg a break. As you may recall, some of you may recall, two years ago, we applied for a grant with the Transportation Growth Management Program. And. They approved it soon after that and it's taken this long to actually get the agreement to you, so. It's been a long road to get to this point. The Transportation System Plan is a document that outlines growth of the city, the city's transportation system. And it's very important for. Planning out large projects, but also it's a very important document for supporting future grant applications that involve transportation. And so one of the reasons why it was necessary to update it is that we have a lot of needs that are not reflected in the current document, which was done in two thousand and five. It's sorely outdated. At the same time, we also applied for a, what we call the North Sweet Home Area Refinement Plan. Which is essentially looking at all the undeveloped property that's north of the railroad tracks to make sure that we have sufficient. Transportation connections for that property to eventually develop. With special concern at railroad crossings and access by emergency vehicles to make sure that. You don't have to, you know, cross the tracks twice to get to, to one, on one call. So we finally have gone through the procurement process with the state. We have an agreement for this, document is available for you to review. The entire plan is expected to cost about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. This would be grant funded, the city would be responsible for twelve point nine five percent of that project, which is amounts to forty-three thousand, one hundred. But that is not necessarily, necessarily paid in cash, it is a in-kind contribution. Made up of wages and salaries of city staff working on the project, so ideally that, that should amount to that forty-three thousand. And if city staff is not sufficient, then we would be responsible for the remainder of whatever is not taken up by. You know, identifying how much time staff had put in on the project. So I'm available to take any questions you may have about this project. It is a rather important one for our future and encourage you to. Anything that's on your mind, let me know.
Question to the Council?
Well, I don't think we should turn down the money, so I'll make a motion to pass that as it's written.
Second.
Second.
It was done.
My roll call please.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Director show, I have six eyes, no nays, one absent approval of the IGA Transportation Growth Management Plan. Next up is Current Scientific RCA for Emergency Contract Water Main Break Repair.
So I have some slides that we can kind of look at. I've put in RCA, we did this literally before the meeting, we're still gathering information. We have made this RCA not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. I am still collecting costs. I spoke with PAC Activation along with Dominic, we, we, we had a meeting later this afternoon. They will be on site tomorrow morning to actually enter and reconnect that line. But then they will come back at another point, once we receive all the, the new hangers. And reinstall, we're going to go from one end of the bridge to the other. We're also going to support it from underneath. Right now, it's just hanging, do we? I, yeah, let me, let me show you what's going on. So this is a video we took. It's pretty, isn't it? So what that bridge inside, that you can see the, the side of that bridge, it's a cavern, two different tubes. And they're, they're broken out in sections. Inside that section, you can see. How the hangers are stretched. I'll let you guys pass this around. They've been corroded for some time. That's watered, it was, it had clean water.
Oh, Greg, just as, as we got the slides out, I'm obviously, are they going to, you're going to replace it like a Unistrut type hanger?
Well, so what we're going to do is inspectors, the, the bridge inspectors believe that these, the. All thread that they have put into there are secure. They're doing a really good job. What has failed is the sides of these because of vibration and flex. You can see these are, this is how it should look. This is one that hasn't failed, but it's failing. So you can see what's occurring, it's, it's stretching, they're elongating. You can only pull a coat hanger for too long until something. And when I was out there on that bridge and seeing the rock trucks come by, you could literally feel it bouncing, and so. Since nineteen seventy-eight, this has been occurring. The plan is, is if we go to a next slide, we were going to replace all those hangers for the pipe supports, those have to be ordered, there's twenty-two of them. But we're also going to increase supports underneath, so basically we'll be able to support it from the concrete, and the engineers believe that that would be perfectly fine to do that. You can see where the water main broke because of sagging, you can see that the, some of the epoxy coatings are. Have been taken off and you can see some of the corrosion that's occurring on the joints. This is kind of, it's not horrible. But this is indicative of starting up failure. But you can see where, because of these things that have, have broken to your personal space, you're okay. You can see that it sagged enough. If you go to the next picture, I think we might have had a picture of it where it separated. So basically, if you can imagine a piece of pipe going inside here, that it basically pulled it out and that's what you're seeing down here. So I imagine in that section, it was close and then finally it let go or another one bracket let go. Then bringing us all the water that was coming out. Now, we've heard from people around there and said, oh, that was leaking the day before and it could have been leaking a little bit. But we saw in our telemetry before eight o'clock in the morning when this thing let go, it literally, everything started dying and we started getting calls instantly. So it could have been slowly leaking, but we would have seen water coming out of that bridge for some time. We would have gotten a call long before that. But it was our staff that actually figured out at the treatment plant, Jager Howard. He, he started calling around, he says, we're losing water somewhere, we got to leak. And so we started having staff going out there. It was literally isolated within an hour, I think. It was literally isolated within an hour, I think. Took longer to drain the bridge because it was full. But that's pretty much what we've got going on. Tomorrow morning, they're going to come in and fix that, and then we're going to come back and order all new brackets. They will be thicker. I guarantee you they will be thicker. And then we're going to support it underneath, so it will not just be hanging. It'll have some weight up under our support. Working with PACX, they're estimating $50,000 to $60,000. I told him not to exceed, and he agreed to that. And we need your approval to kind of get this fixed. Now, the downside to this is that that 12-inch main services White's Electronics, and there's three homes on there. They are outside of our city limits, but they have paid for that main, and they have service as customers of the City of Sweet Home, even though they don't live in our city limits. And so I think it's our responsibility to reconnect to that. It was put in there. We've even talked about future, that there's space inside that bridge if we ever wanted to go further and possibly bring sewer back. So it was kind of interesting. I've been doing this for 36 years. I've never, I've worked on pipes outside of bridges. I've never worked on inside. So anyway, that's what I have, looking for approval. And we can communicate back if anything, anything goes over this, I got to come back to you guys. So I don't anticipate that happening.
I know that one question that came up is, where's the funds coming from?
So we have ARPA funds left over from the water project, right? So we could tap into those. But maybe that's a question for Matt and how we want to fund that. And we don't have a finance director here to discuss that unless he's still online. But I would suggest ARPA funds because we have some leftover, and we need to use those between a certain time.
I, yes, I am here. So Greg is right, you can use ARPA funds. I would need to just clarify that those ARPA funds that he would like to use were not designated by the city council for any other use. If those were when they originally arrived, you would just need to make a council motion and approval to just redesignate those funds to this emergency project. You do have funds available in your water and sewer funds, your enterprise funds that is available in contingency. We would likely move forward with the expenses and then do a supplemental budget at the end of the year when everything is accounted for.
And we recently just put out the, we had Schedule A, Schedule B for a small diameter on Ninth Avenue, and we just backed off on Schedule A, and we didn't use the full million dollars. So it'd be up to your discretion how you want to fund this project.
Questions to council?
Well, Matt, if I may, so which would be your, which way would be the best way you would think for us?
If Greg is anticipating that he's not going to use the ARPA funds, I would actually use the ARPA funds first, because those are readily available and available to use today, and all it would take would be a motion from you as a council to redesignate those funds to this emergency project. And that's all that you would need to do.
Decision would say amended using ARPA funds. Any questions to council? Okay, I know this decision, no, any directives?
Well, I don't know. I would recommend that we use the ARPA money for this project that we have to do, which you need to get finished.
Second.
An agreement amended with ARPA funds.
Yeah.
On the table. I have a motion in a second. My real call, please.
Counsel Coleman?
Yes.
Counsel Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counsel Gerson?
Yes.
Counsel Trask?
Yes.
Counsel Gorley?
Yes.
I have six eyes, no nays, one absent approval of the Emergency Contract Water Main Break Repair not to exceed $60,000, and as amended to use the ARPA funds as approved. Moving on, there's no ordinance bills. Reports of committees.
So, Mr. Mayor, I attended the chamber meeting last week. They have closed their find, their search for their executive director. So hopefully, that will be taken care of soon. And I think he wants to report on the YAC, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we were planning on doing another table or another setup at the Harvest Festival to branch off more on our idea and bring it more to light of mental health and dealing with mental health, because that's what our main focus has been on the past couple months, I'm pretty sure. And we are the, sorry, anxious. Yeah. But we were planning on going to Newport this week, I believe, on Thursday, and to meet with another youth advisory council that is trying to be set up, so that way we can give them ideas on how to set theirs up as well. But yeah, we're planning on doing the Harvest Festival too and branching off of our idea. And as far as I know, our last one was pretty successful. I talked to a couple of people afterwards about our thing, and they said that they really enjoyed it. So.
Well, I hope you enjoy your trip over there to Newport. And I want to say that the YAC, including yourself, have done an excellent job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Well, we just had the health fair, and kudos to the subcommittee that plans that, Bob Dalton and Dick Knowles, and all the volunteers, all the vendors, all the businesses that support that. It was a really, really good event. We had it out in front of the high school this time, and had really good attendance. I think it was a wonderful event. And the YACs put up a couple of canopies, and it was great just to hand them the directions and let them go for it.
Any other committee reports? Okay, moving on to Mayor's report, I want to add on to what Counselor Gordon had mentioned. Talked to Mr. Dalton today. He reiterated the same thing Counselor Gordon said, it was a success. He also wanted to thank the city and all their efforts for their involvement too. So good job, the entire city's staff and everybody that was involved in this. Also, a reminder, September 9th through the 22nd, there will be a road closure, Highway 20, mile post 54 through 57. So anybody that thinks they're ahead for Ben, rethink it.
Think over sheep.
Yeah, it will be closed. Anything else to report? City manager report?
Actually, there's several things that I was told to remind council of. For an election update, the apps are due, applications are due September 2nd by 4:00 PM for those interested in running for city council. So if you have not submitted your applications, you may want to do so at some point in the near future. If you recall, a couple meetings ago, council had agreed to conduct the code reading, the code update reading in one session, and you would set that session for Tuesday, the, is it September 30th or August 30th, which is just next Tuesday?
Yes.
From 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Currently, there are only two counselors who have indicated they will attend, which are Counselor Trask and Counselor Gerson. And so in order for a quorum, we would need two more to fulfill your wishes of holding this in one meeting on the 30th of this month.
Is there food involved?
Well, I am a little bit more fiscally conservative. We'll have peanut butter and jelly as much as you want. Just.
I thought you were going to pull donuts.
That's in the morning.
Yes, there will be lunch provided.
Okay, I was going to say, I can bring some stew and some homemade bread.
How long is due to project this to be read? How long time?
Seven hours.
Do we have to pay attention?
Can we do it later in the day? Because that was the biggest thing. I can't do more.
I have, Counselor Richards has indicated he's able to attend, and Counselor Gorley. So that's our four for the quorum. All others are invited to attend. We're not just limiting it to four.
I will miss out on getting paid. Will you pay me for my day?
Sandwiches.
How about if somebody comes for four hours and somebody else comes for four hours? Is that kind of the same?
That would take the fun out of it. No.
It's good, but not legal.
Yeah, wouldn't quite work.
I will make snacks for those of you who are here, but I will probably be working.
The, also, wanted to point out that the September 13th council meeting, we're trying to plan for a light agenda on that day because some staff are out, and we're just going to see if we can keep it as light as possible on that day, just for kind of information for you moving forward. No, Blair's not invited.
No water mains breaking before then either.
There was an option proposed to cancel the meeting if the councils choose.
The only thing that's definitely on the agenda right now is a presentation from our financial advisors, something similar to that, for some of our investment accounts that the city has. An update on that.
I'm all for a light, a light meeting.
Okay. The next thing we wanted to report out is on September 13th, Tuesday, the 13th, Rain will be hosting a Coffee with Colleagues at 8:30 AM here at the City Hall. So encourage those who don't know, Coffee with Colleagues is members of our local business community and some others, get together and really share their experiences. One typically hosts, and it's just a way to connect with different businesses in the community. So if you're available, it'd be fantastic to attend and represent. I'm going to throw somebody on the bus here, and I forgot to ask them. Any update on FAC and the homeless? I'm looking at the two over there.
Greg's talked enough this meeting. Essentially, the city has fulfilled its end of things, and the site is ready for development. FAC is working on fencing, and hopefully, we'll get somebody in there soon to move the annex building. They have a company do it, but it's kind of, they need to fit them in between jobs on their existing schedule. So it's unclear as to when that building will actually get on site, but they're working on it as fast as they can.
And now we came in on this, I came in on that discussion of the farmer's market, that just get to the police department.
I'm not aware what ultimately happened with the farmer's market. Are you?
I'm looking at Captain Ogden, who was at that meeting as well, if he was not able
Well, I don't have much to say. I was just going to say that we did, I was not at the meeting, but we had talked about moving it to the PD, and I thought we were going to meet at some point, Blair, to get that potentially going. So I don't think we have an issue with it. So.
And this is kind of a continuation of the struggles we're having in that downtown area immediately around Old City Hall. We are desperate to, I am desperate to get the new homeless sleep center up and running to really address that and improve that area
There was like a bunch of people parked on like the other side of the rodeo grounds with like camp trailers and stuff. And I was so close to calling it in because like they're going to, like someone's going to get hit. So I'm not sure if that ended up getting taken care of or not.
It has been taken care of. And that is actually my next topic I was going to mention is RVs in the, we've talked about it before, and I've mentioned it in a couple of my reports. We are, we are having a challenge dealing with RVs and those living in RVs within our community. And as a police department, we are responding literally two, three, four times a day to address RVs and people living in them. And so just Monday, I met with the city attorney, and we're trying to brainstorm options that we may be able to enact or ordinances to change or alter or policies to put in place to where hopefully we can have a better impact on those neighborhoods, a positive impact on those neighborhoods that are having to deal with some of this. With our current city ordinance, an RV is allowed, just as any other vehicle, to park alongside a city street for up to 48 hours. After that time, if they have not moved, the police department is required to post those vehicles for an additional 24 hours before we can, in essence, abate them or have them moved. And so we're hoping to come back in the short timeframe with some options to have a discussion with council and present some options that may or may not be beneficial to the community. But all these options that we're going to present aren't going to be accepted or favorable to all parties in the community. So it's going to be another divisive topic, as everything with the homeless is. Questions on any of that?
A couple of those RVs don't have license plates.
Correct.
So can you drive a vehicle on the road in Oregon without a license plate?
No. But you can park it along the street without a license plate.
But then, but then if you ticket them to move, they have to move.
They do.
Okay, I got it.
And they have, the challenge is that, yes, yes, it is. Yes, it is. The challenge is, we've never wanted to be in the position of targeting a specific individual for their situation that they're in. Could it get to that point? Absolutely, because we're at our, honestly, I'm at my wits' end on what to do with RVs. We're receiving complaints regularly from wherever they're parked at. And so Captain Ogden and I met, well, this morning, and we were talking about options on how to address a number of them. And there's anywhere between five to seven that we struggle with in our community. And so we're just looking at ways to deal with those, and not necessarily wanting to just specifically target somebody who's suffering homelessness. But we also have to protect the community, and the community has a right for the livability aspect in their neighborhood. So we have to try to balance all of that.
Can I ask one more question? So in your noncriminal incident report, for the month of July, you had 40 animal reports?
Yes. Another short answer, absolutely. It's another, it's another topic that my officers really love, is going out and dealing with dogs, in essence, yes.
Running loose.
Yes. And it really must be a problem throughout the entire county, because the Lynn County Animal Control has been full for quite a bit of the last, especially over the summer. We're routinely getting notices, so we really have no spot to even put dogs that we catch. So in those situations, we're really only catching the dogs that are a threat, or either aggressive to somebody else.
Something on the leaderboard about dogs needing to be leashed or something on the leaderboard? I mean.
Most of these are, the dogs are escaping from their residences, and then individuals are reporting just a loose dog somewhere in the area. Very few of them are aggressive.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to get some done for cats, too. I've got like 50 of them on my road. Could you take care of those, too? I think, I just want to make a point here. You're a pro-tem now. Is that not true? That's, you're kind of filling in for us. So why are you putting all this stuff on him? He's a captain. That's why we made him a captain.
Solid point. I like how you think. And in essence, that's the report for the city manager.
Thank you, Jeff. Department Director report. Are you the department directors?
I know the police department, Captain Ogden, does have a message to deliver. I know the police department, Captain Ogden does have a message to deliver.
So it has come to our attention, Gemma, our canine, has put in her retirement notice. So she is at the end of her effective, her life for police work. She's nine years old, and we're gonna be sad to see her retire. But I was talking with our canine handler, and he was saying, you know, at about this age, you know, they they retire out. She doesn't have any health problems, but you know, those are just kind of right around the corner, given her age. And so age is a big factor, and then her performance. So Officer Prather was telling me that in some of her training, she has been giving false alerts on some vehicles, which isn't good. And then also, she's getting just really distracted or distracted. So he, she is ready to go back to civilian life and be a pet. So I've contacted Sasha, who started our our program several years ago, and she's excited about taking the dog back. She put a lot of work into the program, and we're thankful for everything that she did. So the plan is to have a retirement party for Gemma on the thirty-first of this month. That's gonna be on Wednesday at noon at Sankey Park. So we're we're sad, but we're excited to send her off and get her back to Sasha. And then we are absolutely moving forward with the canine program. So as probably most of you know, this year, we got a brand-new canine vehicle, and so we're ready to go and researching getting a new dog. So we're excited about that. So that's the announcement.
Whoa, 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 you can't leave. You're not, you haven't been dismissed, sir.
You have questions?
Yeah. So is is she gonna be off of her insurance policy now? And her and her sick leave and all those things? Are those going away?
So she's cashing out her sick leave.
Yeah. Oh, there is an age, there is an age discrimination, too. Just to let you know. It's been really good. It really has. We need to get, yeah.
It has been.
And Sasha did a lot. Yeah, she did. She really did, and we need to tell her that. On the thirty-first at Sankey Park.
Yep.
What time?
At noon.
At noon.
So I'm gonna reach out. I've already reached out to Sasha and gave her that date. I just need to firm up the time with her and let her know. So.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, that's really good.
Any other questions?
No, I think the canine program is a great program.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it expand beyond just drug dog.
Well, there. So there.
Or not.
So one of the things that we, Officer Prather and I have talked about is is just that. So we do have some options moving forward. And one of the challenges that we do have with the ever-evolving and changing drug laws, as we're, we all know, makes it a little bit more difficult and challenging to use a narcotics dog. So it'd be interesting to do some research and see what other agencies are doing. And so I think I think we'll at least take a look at that. So.
Yeah, or not. I agree. Also, the the point, though, with the canine, though, is the fact that it gives a little bit of a safety barrier for the officers. The way, way things are evolving in in law enforcement over the past years.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And I just wanted to clarify, the reason Gemma's going back to Sasha, because that was always in the agreement, the written agreement, when Sasha donated Gemma to the department for this purpose, was that upon retirement or discontinuation of the program that she'd go back to her.
So, Mr. Mayor, so are you answering other questions?
I I will give it my best shot. I will give it my best shot.
So I noticed a lot of thefts at the marina.
Yes, so we have that that area of town has been getting hit out there. So we have effectively just notified our night shift because that's, those are the hours that that is taking place. I mean, people are calling in and saying, hey, it's happening sometime overnight. So so, yes, we're trying to get some focus patrols out there and deter to deter any kind of, you know, of that activity for sure. So but that's definitely been, that side of town has been active.
Yeah, and I, and I do appreciate also the patrolling of Quartzville. I know that you don't need to do that, but I do appreciate that because it's keeping the fire hazards down.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
On Marina, that's, you can't count.
Yeah, that is. So the marina out there is county, but nonetheless, that whole side of town, I would say forty-fifth or forty-fifth, all the way out to the marina area is, I mean, we've been having some issues out there. So.
And it may have been referencing the storage facility at the forty-four thousand block of Main Street. We had a number of break-ins of R Vs in that area.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah. Any other questions for our department directors? Or department directors having to bring up? Okay, council business good of the order. We know Samaritan is on August twenty-ninth at ten A M. gonna have a groundbreaking event. So I don't know. You want anything to that, Jeff?
I apologize. What? As far as us attending that? No, that's just, I received that information today at Rotary through Christie. And so we'll, as many of us for the city hall will be attending as as possible.
Do we need, do we need a possible quorum?
Yeah, no problem. No question. If there is nothing further, we will go ahead and adjourn at eight twenty-seven.